Excuse Mr. Oberdorff.
Second.
All those in favor of excusing Mr. Oberdorff, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Is there a motion to approve the minutes for the February tenth, two thousand and twenty-five regular council meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of approving the minutes from February the tenth, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Is there a motion to approve the agenda for the February twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-five regular council meeting?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor of approving the agenda for February the twenty-fourth, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Are there any committee reports this evening? Reporter, the mayor and administrator, Allison, do you have anything this evening?
Yes, I have several items, mayor, thank you. First up, we have a request from Dave's Running. This year, they would like to use Rossford in conjunction with the Toledo Mini Marathon. That would be on September the twenty-first, and they would be running straight down sixty-five. As you can see, it starts over in Toledo, and it runs through East Toledo, and then it comes down through Rossford, Perrysburg, Mommy, and then it goes back to Toledo. So it would be straight down sixty-five that they would be running, and it would be approximately a two-hour window in which time they would be running down sixty-five. So they are requesting the road be closed for this, and it would be on September the twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-five.
What's the timeframe?
From seven a.m. to about nine-thirty is what they've estimated.
They want the whole thing shut down?
Just like we do usually, just like we do usually, the one side.
Well, we have shuttles and everything available.
Yes.
I'm good with it. Motion to approve.
Prove it.
Second.
Is there anyone in the audience that has a problem with us passing this this evening, or any questions in regards to it? No.
All those in favor of the motion to approve the request from Dave's Running for September the twenty-first, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you. The next item that I have is another request from Dave's Running. It's for the normal race that they do. It's always around the twenty-fifth or twenty-sixth of October. So this year, it would be on October the twenty-fifth, and it's the same route that they run every year. This last year, I think, took just over an hour, maybe an hour and a half. Be the same. We'd have shuttles, we'd get people in and out. The police are really good about getting people in and out at the breaks, so we don't have people backed up. But again, this is a yearly event that they hold here in Rossford. They bring thousands of people to our downtown, and this year is on October twenty-fifth.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Is there anyone in the audience that has a problem with us passing this this evening, or any questions in regards to it? No.
All those in favor of approving the request from Dave's Running for October the twenty-fifth, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you. The next item that I have is a request from Danny's Cafe Rossford, and it is for August the second, and it's for the all-years Rossford High School reunion. So what they are requesting is the same as what they did for the Zombie Crawl last year. They barricade off the front and the side so that they have additional space for people. And this would be on August the second.
Go ahead.
Does it have time, a timeframe? Isn't he advertising outdoor vans?
I don't know about outdoor vans. I know he has Arctic Clam and the beef carvers that will be inside.
Okay. Does it have a timeframe on there?
This says it would be, the event would start at eleven a.m., and it would go till two-thirty a.m., which would be what time the bar closes. That's what he's requesting, the closure of these parking spaces, like they did last year for the Zombie Crawl.
Carolyn, I think what I saw, though, showed that the outside music stopped at eleven o'clock, which is...
Yes, which is our ordinance.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve as long as the outside music stops at eleven o'clock.
Second.
I'll second that.
Is there anyone in the audience that has a problem with us passing this this evening, or any questions in regards to it? No.
All those in favor of approving the request by Danny's for August the second for the all-years high school reunion with the stipulation that outdoor music ends by eleven o'clock. Any, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you. The next item I have is from Danny's Cafe, and it's for the Zombie Crawl. It's essentially the exact same thing, the exact same times, and the music will be indoors. And that will be the end of October, October the twenty-fifth.
Hmm, does it's the same day as the race like it was last year?
It is, just like it was last year.
Another perfect storm. I mean, that...
It was a blast.
Right, and it...
With zero problems.
So I don't see why we wouldn't approve it again. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Is anyone in the audience has a problem with us passing this this evening, or any questions in regards to it? No.
All those in favor of approving the Danny Zombie Crawl for October the twenty-fifth, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you. And the last item I have tonight is a request for approval of an encroachment. This is actually, if you were standing in the alley behind Danny's and you're looking at the patio, they would like to put this rooftop system, you can see it goes at an angle. It would be completely removable for in the summer, but they would like to put it on there for rain incidents like that. And if you see clear to the left, it will hang over the city's property. It is more than eight feet high, so even if somebody was going through on a bicycle, they should have no problem clearing it.
It basically replaces the tent, right?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Does it hang over any in back?
Uh, no, it would just be on the side.
It's a lean, too.
Towards Bergen Street.
Like where the parking is?
Yes, it would hang over just that portion of the sidewalk there.
So no vehicles or anything like that would be...
Nobody should be, and it would be high enough that everything would be underneath it.
Does it go right to the property line on the back? I'm just concerned about trucks going closer to the Virchows' house than to try to avoid that.
It's on the opposite side, and it hangs over the sidewalk.
But there's nothing over the alley?
No.
No, nothing.
See...
Yeah, that left drawing shows where it would end. Concurrent with the back of the building now.
So it won't hang out into the alleyway? Would, it would end where?
It's inside the fence.
And Mark requested this because he has the zoning permit for it he got today. So this, you guys would just be approving the encroachment that would be hanging over the sidewalk area.
There a motion?
Does it need to make a decision today? When are they, when are the plans to start it?
Um, they'd like to start it as soon as possible, and the building inspection department is waiting on you guys' approval on the encroachment. You could, you could do it with the stipulation that it doesn't encroach on the alley behind.
Just so councils aware, it's similar to what council did in the front with the fence. This is not an easement, this is your consent, so it can always be revoked in the future.
And it's removable, right? It's not, it's not permanent.
It's removable, yes.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve it. A motion to approve it pending it doesn't encroach into the alleyway behind it.
Second.
Is there anyone in the audience that has a problem with us passing this this evening, or any questions in regards to it? No.
All those in favor of approving the building project for Danny's with the stipulation it doesn't encroach where it shouldn't, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, that's all I have, mayor.
All right, I only have one thing this evening, and, well, I have two, but I'll save the second one. I want to congratulate Zach and Brenna on their one-year anniversary.
Congratulations.
It seemed like yesterday, but then again, it was yesterday. It's only been one year, so. Mr. Watcher, any correspondence?
None, mayor.
All right, introduction of ordinances. Is there a motion to read ordinance twenty-twenty-five dash eleven by title only?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor of reading by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Twenty-twenty-five dash eleven is an ordinance repealing section one thirty-nine point oh-two of the Rossford Municipal Code and enacting a new Rossford Municipal Code, section one thirty-nine point oh-two, full-time fire department established and declaring an emergency. It's a first reading.
Allison?
I'm actually deferring to Kevin this time.
Of council recall, the last meeting you passed the ordinance establishing the full-time fire department with certain officer positions, there were, there was a full-time chief, an assistant fire chief, and then two captains. After talking with Chief Soroka, he felt that it was more appropriate to change that command structure to a chief, assistant chief, a battalion chief, and one captain. And I don't know if you want to explain, Chief Soroka, your thoughts to the council? That's what this ordinance does.
Yes, the problem with having a couple captains is that that captain that I would assign could be pulled into the union, and then you would have union protection instead of being hired by the, by the chief. This way, there was a separation that he can't, he's, he's separated, and he's going to be doing chief's assignments and work, so that's, that's why I was reading for that. A little bit of a mistake.
I'll move to suspend with the second and third readings.
Second.
Is there anyone in the audience that has a problem with us passing this this evening, or any questions in regards to it? No.
All those in favor of suspending with the second and third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to declare ordinance twenty-twenty-five dash eleven an emergency?
Second.
All those in favor of declaring that emergency, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move adoption.
Second. Vote on the motion to adopt ordinance twenty-twenty-five dash eleven. Heben?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Tinney?
Aye.
Echol?
Aye.
Toth?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Is there a motion to read ordinance twenty-twenty-five dash twelve by title only?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor of reading by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Twenty-twenty-five dash twelve is an ordinance authorizing the amendment of the zoning map of the city of Rossford and adopting a new zoning map of the city of Rossford. This is a first reading.
Else?
This was recommended by both the zoning inspector and the Rossford Planning Commission, and what it is, is an update of our map with all of the changes. You guys have a listing at your desk of all of the changes that have happened in zoning, and it also changes the map, so here's a large map, and then we also have the one here on the board. So this just changes the map. These changes have already been made through the planning commission. This is just adopting the new map that reflects those changes.
How can you tell on the map what's changed?
By the colors. You would have to map, you would have to line them up with the, we have the reference with all of the listing, the spreadsheet. And I don't need this right away, if you want to take a look at it, but your, the zoning inspector requested it.
I'll make a motion to suspend with the second and third readings.
Second.
Is there, is there anyone in the audience that would have a problem with us passing this this evening, or any questions in regards to it? No.
All those in favor of suspending with the second and third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'll move for adoption.
Second.
Vote on the motion to adopt ordinance twenty-twenty-five dash twelve. Echol?
Aye.
Tinney?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Heben?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Toth?
Aye.
Is there a motion to read ordinance twenty-twenty-five dash thirteen by title only?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor of reading by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Twenty-twenty-five dash thirteen is an ordinance accepting the dedication to public use of the street, Gateway Avenue, and other public places and facilities in the Ambrose Development and declaring an emergency. This is a first reading.
Allison?
This is to dedicate the new road that comes off of the roundabout that is located here in the center of Daimeling Road, and it would, it comes down here and stops at the township right before the new Amazon facility. So that would dedicate it to Rossford because both of these parcels, all the way to here where it gets to the Amazon facility, is in Rossford.
That also opens up their property for future development.
Yes, it does.
I'll move to suspend with the second and third reading.
Second.
Is there anyone in the audience that has a problem with us passing this this evening, or any questions in regards to it? No.
All those in favor of suspending with the second and third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to declare twenty-twenty-five dash thirteen an emergency?
Second.
All those in favor of declaring that emergency, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move adoption.
Second. Vote on the motion to adopt ordinance twenty-twenty-five dash thirteen. Owen?
Aye.
Heben?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Toth?
Aye.
Echol?
Aye.
Tinney?
Aye.
Is there a motion to read ordinance twenty-twenty-five dash fourteen by title only?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor of reading by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Twenty-twenty-five dash fourteen is an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into a partnership agreement with Wood County, Ohio, for the county's two thousand and twenty-four Community Housing Impact and Preservation Program, CHIP, Partnership Environmental Review Record, and declaring an emergency. This is a first reading.
Allison?
This is the CHIP program that we participate in every year and have for quite some time. They're just adding another additional step to it, that we agree that we will participate in the environmental review record. It's all handled through Wood County, but the city has to agree.
Is there a motion?
Motion to suspend with the second and third reading?
Second.
Is there anyone in the audience that has a problem with us passing this this evening, or any questions in regards to it? No.
All those in favor of suspending with the second and third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to declare ordinance twenty-twenty-five dash fourteen an emergency?
Second. All those in favor of declaring that emergency, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move adoption.
Second.
Vote on the motion to adopt ordinance twenty-twenty-five dash fourteen. Owen?
Aye.
Heben?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Tinney?
Aye.
Echol?
Aye.
Toth?
Aye.
Is there a motion to read ordinance twenty-twenty-five dash fifteen by title only?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor of reading by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Twenty-twenty-five dash fifteen is an ordinance amending supplemental number four, the annual appropriation measure for the year beginning January one, two thousand and twenty-five, and ending December thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-five, passed by ordinance twenty-twenty-four dash seventy-nine.
Allison?
This is a supplemental that includes refunds every year. If people pay in and businesses pay into their taxes ahead of time, then sometimes they need to get a rebate, so this includes the refunds. It also includes the fire chief's salary. It includes the vehicle response, which is our next ordinance for three vehicles, and it also includes the TIP payments for the year.
Okay. Is there a motion? Go ahead.
Has finance committee discussed the new vehicles?
We have not. It was just brought up today.
Pardon me?
I just found out about it today.
Yeah, I think it needs to go to committee before we decide to spend any money. I mean, I know we're going to need some cars, but I don't like to start the precedent to skip over finance.
Okay, first reading. Is there a motion to read ordinance twenty-twenty-five dash sixteen by title only?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor of reading by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Twenty-twenty-five dash sixteen is an ordinance authorizing the purchase of three Ford Explorer vehicles through the State of Ohio Cooperative Purchasing Program, waiving competitive bidding, and declaring an emergency. This is a first reading.
First reading. Introduction of resolutions. Is there a motion to read resolution twenty-twenty-five dash zero-two by title only?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor of reading by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Twenty-twenty-five dash oh-two is a resolution to approve the mayor's appointment of a superintendent of the Public Works Department and declaring an emergency. This is a first reading.
Move suspension, the second and third readings?
Second.
Does anyone in the audience have a problem with us passing this this evening, or have any questions in regards to it? You had to come up to the mic and state your name and address for the record.
I just wanted to know why we're getting, you're having a new superintendent. I thought, I was under the impression that Tyler was just on vacation.
No, he retired.
Oh, that's right, he retired, because you made him, sorry.
Okay, Darryl, you want to come up? I'm excited about Darryl. I've known him for a very long time. He's a great leader, and he's going to lead probably the best public works department in the state.
We got to vote first.
Congratulations.
Do we got to vote on him? Vote first. I haven't decided. Got to do a... Motion to declare...
Hold it. All those in favor of suspending with the second and third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to declare twenty-twenty-five dash oh-two an emergency?
Second.
All those in favor of declaring that emergency, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move adoption.
Second. Vote on the motion to adopt resolution twenty-twenty-five dash oh-two. Owen?
Aye.
Heben?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Toth?
Aye.
Echol?
Aye.
Tinney?
Aye.
No.
Congratulations. You and your family, then you and your team. Here, come on, come on. Go ahead. Izzy, you want to get over?
Oh, shoot, that's gosh.
Oh, God. Team Public Works, you want to come off?
Mayor? Mayor? Do you have a beard to work in the public works department?
I can grow one, so that means I would never... Congratulations.
Okay, is there a motion to read resolution twenty-twenty-five dash zero-three by title only?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of reading by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Twenty-twenty-five dash oh-three is a resolution to approve the mayor's appointment of Zach Schmidt to the Toledo Area Regional Transit Authority, TARDA, and declaring that emergency. This is a first reading.
Is there a motion?
Move to suspend with the second and third reading.
Second.
Does anyone in the audience have a problem with us passing this this evening, or any questions in regards to it? No.
All those in favor of suspending with the second and third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move to declare resolution twenty-twenty-five dash zero-three an emergency?
Second. All those in favor of declaring that emergency, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move adoption.
Second. Vote on the motion to adopt resolution twenty-twenty-five dash oh-three. Heben?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Tinney?
Aye.
Echol?
Aye.
Toth?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Abstain.
Actually, I know most of you, if not all of you, know Zach. He's actually here this evening. Zach, are you still here? Come on up, buddy. Zach is an amazing young talent, beyond accomplished, and he's a doer. If you put him on a board or give him any task, he'll, he'll, he'll kill it, so thank you so much for serving our great city on the TARDA board. All right, buddy. Is there a motion to read resolution twenty-twenty-five dash zero-four by title only?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of reading by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Twenty-twenty-five dash oh-four is a resolution to approve the mayor's reappointment of Andrea Henline to the Municipal Planning Commission and declaring that emergency.
Move suspension with the second and third readings?
Second.
Does anyone in the audience have a problem with us passing this this evening, or any questions in regards to it? No.
All those in favor of suspending with the second and third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move to declare an emergency?
Second. All those in favor of declaring that emergency, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move adoption.
Second. Vote on the motion to adopt resolution twenty-twenty-five dash oh-four. Echol?
Aye.
Toth?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Sorry.
Heben?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Tinney?
Aye.
Okay. Council remarks. Mr. Toth?
I have nothing.
Okay, Ms. Echol.
Well, welcome to the, I know you've always been on the team, I mean, not always, but always, so, welcome to the new superintendent team, I guess. And I want thanks, Ty, that's for Darryl, I make an eye contact, anyone who's watching. And thanks to Tyler for almost twenty, almost forty years of service to the city of Rossford and all the snow and the mud and the floods and the exploding sewers and all that good stuff that he went through. I just want to extend my appreciation, and thanks to Zach and Andrea for serving on committees.
Awesome. Mrs. Tinney?
I would like to congratulate Mr. Agel also, and thank Tyler Colb for the years of service that he provided for Rossford. It was greatly appreciated. I hope he has a great retirement. I also want to thank Kevin Weeks for serving on TARDA. If anybody knows Kevin, he's a lot like Zach, he'll get things done, and I'm so happy to see Zach on that board. He's a great replacement, so congratulations. And I'm so happy to see Zach on that board. He's a great replacement. So congratulations. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Owens?
Echo the sentiments. Congrats to everybody.
Mr. Heben?
Same. Echo the sentiments and happy birthday, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much. And Mrs. Reynolds?
Uh, thank you to Tyler for all of his service and congratulations, Daryl, Zachary, and Andrea.
All right, audience remarks.
Couple of questions. Jeff Evans on 777, I have a couple of questions. Since spring is on a corner, are the sidewalks on Ham scheduled for replacement, like we planned?
They will be once we get Ben. Yep.
Okay. The other thing is, is there, has there been a trouble ticket submitted for the large lights at Buck Road and 75? I think those are hers, the big ones with the crank of lights.
I haven't heard that there is an issue, but I'm sure there will be now. They're all out?
They're all out. It's dark up there.
You're talking about the overpass?
Yeah, the ones, yeah, where seventy, where Buck goes over 75. And I think some are out and around about to at Buck and Lime City. And also, um, oh, there's a large trench developing in the laptop down at the marina at the base of that. You know, they're ready to, I think it's, I think it's for an underground power line?
I was down there today.
Will that be your first?
Yeah.
Could be done before?
Yes. Before the marina opens.
Huh?
Before the marina opens.
Perfect. And the other thing is, I thought they were supposed to put the sewers in on Hillcrest and Riverside before moving up, so they didn't have to come back down there?
No, they're just going to make sure that those are done before they do any of the paving. The paving will be the last project. It'll pave everything.
What about, aren't there sewers and water lines on Hillcrest?
There are, but they're going to, they're going to do those when they're done with all the jennings.
Oh, then they're going to come back?
And pave it all, yes.
Well, no, I, I mean-
And they're going to put in the sewers and everything in Hillcrest and-
When they get done all the way to the Eagle Point, they're going to come back?
Yes.
And do the sewers and water lines there. Why didn't they do them before?
Because the design wasn't done yet. The design wasn't done yet because the Public Works Committee decided to do Hillcrest and Riverside later than they decided to do Jennings. So we're waiting on the design and now that the design is done, then they can do it all.
All right. And that, will that, will that all be done this year?
Yes.
Perfect. All right. Yeah. All right, thank you.
Anyone else?
Member Charles, 113 Bergen Street. Does Danny's have a noise variance in place other than what was set in place?
No, it's going to be till 11 o'clock and it cannot reach a certain decibel level.
Okay, and who is going to monitor that?
The roster police will.
Because this was the zombie crawl. My front yard.
Did you call the police that night?
Hmm?
Did you call the police that night?
No, I didn't.
Yeah, if it gets too loud, just call the police or call me personally.
So there's, even though there's a special event, there's a decibel still set in place from all the other light work that we did?
That's correct.
Is Danny's aware of that? Because they're advertising an outdoor band from 12:00 PM to 12:00 AM.
Yeah, they're aware of it. I spoke with Brad about it.
So I'm not, we're not going backwards and I'm not going to have to go through all of this again?
No, and I, I wasn't aware there's been any problems recently.
It's been better. I just don't want to go backwards. The zombie crawl, somebody said it was a blast. It wasn't a blast for-
I had fun.
Bergen Street. Okay, yeah, I'm sure you had fun. Your house isn't there.
Right.
Okay?
So just do this. If it ever gets too loud, call the police or call me personally.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Got a comment on what Ms. Burchill said because in the noise ordinances, the, when you're, when you're adjusting, I understand you're making an adjustment for the party. But, but that's in a commercial district and when a residential district neighbors or borders that district, you're supposed to go by the residential district. So if you increase, if you're allowed to increase the decibel limit by five decibels, it, it has to be based, I think, on the neighborhood.
We're not increasing the decibel levels. And Kevin, if I'm correct, it's, it's the same for everybody, isn't it?
Correct. And the, the police call, they have a decibel meter that they go out and measure. And I think a couple of times last year, there was a discussion with the owner to turn it-
The decibel limits in the residential are the same as the commercial?
I would have to look at this, I would have to look at the specifics.
Because you just made the statement, they are the same for everybody.
I know that the police are aware of the decibel levels.
Because I've read it a couple of different times and it is different in residential and in commercial. And it basically says that when it neighbors a residential section, it's based on the residential section.
That's correct.
Okay, all right. And they're different.
I don't know that for a fact. I look at, I don't have time to look at that noise ordinance every day, so it's been-
All right, well, all right. Because you just said, you just said they're the same.
I'm saying that they take it from, you're right, they take it from the residential.
At, based on the residential decibels, right? Correct? Not based on the commercial?
I'd have to look at, I'd have to look exactly at the statute. I know that our police department is very competent at that. When they're called out there, they handle the situation.
We'll, we'll figure it out between now and August. Is there anyone else?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Um, dump trucks, dump trucks and construction traffic on Windsor and Huffman and-
As soon as you notified me, I contacted them and they said they are not doing it any longer.
I don't think it's stopped.
You don't think it's stopped?
No.
Okay, because I, if you see it or somebody sees it in town, have them call me right away and I'll go down there.
Well, can we get some police presence going through there and ticketing any dump drive, truck drivers that go? Or any construction traffic that goes outside the, because there's a green upon traffic path, isn't there?
Mm-hmm. There is.
And so I don't know, I mean, I know plenty of dump truck drivers and I know they don't always pay close attention to directions. So I think if we have to start giving tickets out, then we need to start giving tickets out.
We'll send them down there.
Thank you.
Uh-oh, I reminded Diane.
No. Diane Wolf, 264 Jennings.
Yes, it has been better.
Okay.
Not, not, no drivers are coming up and down. At least Huffman. I can't speak for what's happening on Windsor. But we do have a little bit of problem when they have the big piece of heavy equipment. They're not stopping at that stop sign.
Okay.
And Huffman is not closed.
Okay.
So there could be cross-traffic, you know? I'm not affected by it because I don't, I've just chosen to ignore Jennings Road at this point because, you know, obvious reasons. But they're not stopping and they're going, you know, with a very heavy piece of equipment very quickly through the intersection. So they need to be mindful of that intersection.
I'll let them know.
That's my take from sitting on that corner.
Okay, I will let them know.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Those in favor of adjourning, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?